All right, call this meeting of the Underhill Planning Commission order Thursday, May 4. I know there is public comment, so it's our first thing. If you don't mind just sort of introducing yourself and yeah, just walk us through what you want to do, please.
So I'm Meg Armstrong. I came, I live over on the end of Sam Ward Road off of Silly Hill Road. And we have approximately seventy-five acres in Underhill and other land in Westford. What I would like to do is subdivide off three acres for my son to live just before he gets to our house at the end of the road. The reason I want to do it three acres instead of, and my issue is the soil and water conservation segment crosses a hundred percent of my road coverage. And then the rest of my land is all three acres own, which makes zero sense. So basically, I kind of did the research and I like read through what the rural residential's goal is for clustering development, you know, near existing roads and water conservation districts' goal is to, you know, not develop lands that are stony and hilly and all that. And it's just the way the map's drawn on my property, those are mutually exclusive. They're absolutely backwards because the rural conservation district boundary kind of semi-parallel Silly Hill Road and I'm probably a thousand feet back from Silly Hill Road, so it cuts right across our property.
You're on a town road though.
Yeah, not a public road. And so then I looked through all the places that water conservation district crossed the public road. And there's like way more than fifty percent of the properties are non-conforming. And like on my road, there's no fifteen acre, there's one fifteen acre or thirty-five acre property that's in that conservation district. Everyone else is like five, you know, Steve Ferrera's got three acres and, you know, so it's not out of character for this little road. He only has four houses on it to have another.
But those predated regulations or?
Uh, I don't know them, I don't think. Well, maybe, I don't know, the guy across from Steve Ferrera, I don't know. I think some of his land's half and three, literally, you know how long Sam Ward Road is, it's less than a quarter mile long.
Sorry to interrupt. I brought up, if you will, over here, I pulled up the zoning map. So just to clarify, we have mega parcel here. This is not a, this is not a complete because it's been subdivided more recently. But the parcel in question is the part highlighted in blue and the darker green is the part portion in soil and water conservation district. And the part in yellow is the rural part in rural residential zoning district.
Which, if you know the land, it's like, that's all pastures and wetland is the rural residential area. And the soil and water conservation district is the one flat, kind of bony, but it's better soil than most of my soil. We call this the lot landing. It's kind of the access into the rest of the woodlot. And the small three acre parcel just below mine is Steve Ferrera's. That's on a very steep hill. You know, and he's got, part of his land is in one and part's the other. But yeah, that one was, I'm sure, pre-dating this. It's just that basically that map, that soil and water conservation district is really, if you read what its purpose is and then what that map shows, then they're mutually exclusive on my property. And I'm sure there are other places and I'm sure that most places they work, you know, where it's the top of poker hill or the side of Mount Mansfield and things like that. But I don't, I don't know how they came up with that. So I was wondering what, you know, what can I do to change it? And we were talking, and I'd be happy to flip-flop those kind of like thirty acres that, I don't, I don't know how much that soil and water conservation area is on my property, but I'm guessing it's around probably fifteen acres total.
Total, yeah.
Yeah. And be happy to like increase that somewhere else that's actually where it's kind of supposed to be, like away from roads.
Yeah.
Not on the only public right of way. We have power right there, all those things.
But you can't get a three acre lot in the, it, you could, but it's not an ideal lot is what your issue is, right?
No, my, my issue, a three acre lot in that soil and water conservation district would be an ideal lot. It would be affordable, it'd be next to power, it'd be next to public road, all those things. But it doesn't need the zoning rights because of that map.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right, yeah, the zoning, I mean, the zoning says if you're going through a soil and water conservation, you can't develop the back portion to
If you make that map-
It has to be the soil and water conservation group all the way through.
Right. If you make that map smaller so you can see kind of the gist of that soil and water conservation district, it's meant to kind of lop off the backs of all the properties that come off Silly Hill because that's the main road. My road happens to be perpendicular to Silly Hill, so it actually-
The logic was to protect this, use that to protect these rear, the rear sections of these parcels that have frontage along Silly Hill Road.
Oh, I see.
But what it does is to my parcel who only has frontage on Sam Ward Road is it takes the only frontage and says, you shouldn't develop it, which doesn't seem to make sense. It's a public road.
But you can develop it because you have ten acres though.
Yeah, so
But you don't want to.
I don't want to because then it's kind of unaffordable. If I take fifteen acres out, can't go back in current, it's all in current use. And it would be a big hit to take out that much land that's current use or I'd have to give him, sell Eli like twenty-five acres so he could still have twenty acres in current use. It gets, it kind of, it gets to be, you have to be a millionaire to live there and he's not.
So what you're saying is, from your perspective, the ideal spot to create a new lot and develop a house would be in the area, would be a small, would be this area along Sam Ward Road that is on a parcel presumably less than, like around three acres or less than the fifteen acres that would be required to create a parcel in so.
The reason I just want to do fifteen acres is because then it gets kind of unaffordable.
Yeah.
It isn't current use and you're penalty to take that to current use. And then if it's fifteen acres, it can't go back into current use because they require at least twenty-two or four, I think. Even though it's, like I said, it's contiguous with another hundred acres in current use in Westford too. I mean, it's, it's not a small piece of property. And development wise, I mean, there's Rappa Road over here. If, if the logic flowed on this soil and water conservation district, there would be a section up through here that says, don't develop all these, you know, the backs of all these parcels. Because those are all ten acre parcels, but they're zone three. But it, that map just didn't get run that way. And so I'm kind of laying out here saying, the map hasn't changed since whenever.
How long, when was this met?
I don't know.
Nineteen eighties.
Yeah, right, so.
It hasn't really seen some of these.
Yeah. And, you know, I think by zoning, I could go put six trailers out in that field on three acres each and that would meet zoning and be awful. And don't get me wrong, I don't want to do any of these things. I just want an affordable parcel for my son and to go out into the three acre area means you have to run a road and power.
Yeah.
And it's very, very wet. We have a massive amount of system for our house. So it just seemed like when I actually read what soil and water conservation district, you know, that first paragraph under the, its purpose just doesn't work on that piece of land. And I wondered what the, what the mechanism might be to either change the map or look at the map, like this.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong here everyone, because we're going back a little bit, but one of our projects is to look at basically the zoning map for all of Underhill and look at the projects. The problem is, so you're in the loop to do that, because your timeframe is probably, you probably wish for a shorter timeframe. The problem, well, the problem for us is to do that, we have this natural resources inventory that's being conducted by a different group, which we're waiting for. And then after that comes back to us, then one of our major projects is to do what you're talking about and revisit the districts.
Yeah.
But that's probably like a year away.
We have another year on the inventory.
You have another year on the inventory, so then-
Inventory, how does that impact the district map?
It's, it's all about the natural communities, wildlife corridors. It's, you know, kind of framing a little more specifically what is relevant in each of those districts.
Yeah.
The inventory is basically a long-term fact-finding mission run by this, like, committee that Sandy's a member of that is charged with gathering the data that will lead to a revamp of the zoning map. But that data gathering process takes a while because, you know, we have to pay a consultant to do it.
I mean, my question to you Nick is, because what the planning commission does, like it's so long-term.
Yeah.
Like, is there a, a, a shorter term route via the DRB? Because this feels like-
Yeah. I mean, yes and no, not according to what Meg would prefer. So we talked about this a little bit and why I told her was, okay, the bad news is a zoning map change of the one that you say would work for you would require an edit of the zoning map. And that is the sort of thing that would require basically the same process that we're going through right now with our bylaws where we have to, we have to edit the zoning map. And that's a pretty, a pretty big one.
And it probably needs town approval too.
Town, exactly. It's like, town approval, big deal, so unfeasible for a case-by-case basis, but something that maybe, that, that-
It is literally on our list. It's one of our projects we want to work on.
As far as Meg's case and the case of anyone else in a similar situation like this, the solutions are basically, yes, the DRB sort of, DRB-based solutions would be either to let the DRB use their power to adjust zoning district lines up to one hundred feet, which would probably be insufficient for this. So that's one option where if it's a marginal case, the DRB, it's not even moving the district, it's extending the district standards up to one hundred feet. So you can, it's essentially moving the district line, but that's, we call it something different. But that only applies to one hundred feet of, of, of lot line or frontage, of frontage in one area. So that's basically there so that you can create a district that doesn't, that doesn't get split. That's really not helpful for you. The best option for you would be to find three acres back here in the area that, that's entirely within the soil and the rural residential district and then get a frontage waiver from the DRB to create that law.
Out in the field, which is exactly what
Where you're trying to-
Exactly. I'm trying to avoid, and it's what you're saying, you're trying to avoid too.
It's the exact opposite of the purposes for both of us.
Right.
Using the ADU rules, but then you can't split off the ownership.
That's right. So you could do an ADU.
But then you can split off the ownership. It would still be on when you own, but you could build an accessory dwelling unit.
Could I do that and then?
You already have an accessory dwelling unit.
No, because we subdivided in Robyn and Andy on our original house.
This is not quite accurate.
The first thing that comes to mind for me is an ADU because that seems to get you around almost everything except splitting up the ownership.
So
You couldn't have a D to the, you couldn't have a D to it. It would just-
What if, could I do that? And then assuming you're, you're good on your plan to actually look at these maps in forty years?
Then you could, then you could split it off. You'd be making a bet that the map, you'd be making a bet that the map broke in your favor, basically.
And any bylaws that changed along with it.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I mean, there's nothing stopping you from, from, you know, assuming that all the other permitting stuff works out from finding a spot down here, building a small structure, we can talk about how big that could be, and making, calling out an accessory dwelling unit and having someone live there. You can steal for it. Yeah.
Right. And then either the map will change or I will die and then it won't be an issue because he'll probably get part of that land anyways.
Hopefully the map changes.
Well, yeah.
Out of the two scenarios.
Right. I would have no urge to do this, to have, to just sell a lot, have something else.
Right, right.
Only urge for me to do this is because he would like the house.
Yeah. The, um, the-
That's why the ADU comes to mind because it's, you know, it's family, so it's not, yeah, I don't know.
I think that's probably the, the, the best solution.
Okay.
Yeah. And again, maybe a little limited in terms of size, but I-
How limited?
Well, it's easy, it's an easy formula, actually.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
It's a, we're-
Thirty percent of your current home or a thousand square feet, whichever is larger. What was the first?
Thirty percent of your primary residence. So if your residence is-
My, this is a little, my primary residence is a park, it's within a park barn.
We go off of what is on the listers card for, like what is, what part is the house and the occupied part? Yeah.
Because you get the greater of the thirty percent or the thousand square feet.
Yeah, that's-
I don't know if that's too small too. Sorry, that's another catch with the ADU rules.
But you could go up to a thousand.
Could we flip it for the big, that we could build a house and then our house could be
Yeah.
The smaller, because he's got, hopefully got a growing family and I-
Yes, that actually could be done. That would take some sort of permitting jujitsu, but we could do it. But yeah, we could probably, we could probably-
There's a, there's a task log. It may not be a very strict one, but-
Well, and, and the maps are literally on the to-do list. So where they go, I don't know, but the maps are being revisited.
Yeah. Well, I would, I would raise my hand to help on that because, I don't know, I've studied them quite a bit and I guess it's like, the amount of non-conforming use is way more than the amount of conforming use.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And it just seems to continue to propagate that when it flies in the face of what the purposes of the district's are.
Right, right.
A little backwards.
Now, we know, when we were going through the, the new town plan, this came up, like this is something we need to put in the list to work on.
The way the present ADU reads it, it says the dwelling unit does not exceed fifty percent, fifty percent or one thousand square feet, whichever is less.
Oh, right, yeah.
That's how it reads now. We're, we're in the process of changing.
A thousand square feet would be the max.
What's the less, basically?
Yeah, but these are-
Fifty percent or-
These are-
These are literally being revised.
Yeah, yeah. The, the, once you, once we're done here, we're gonna just start talking about ADU.
We're almost done. I finished tomorrow.
We can talk a little bit more, either way though, anything we decide tonight isn't going to be actionable for quite some time. So we should just go off of what you are, off of the current interpretations and those are complicated enough that we should probably not use further PC time to discuss those.
More importantly, it could be hopefully-
We, I'm think, I'm sure we can figure something out between, between an ADU build and maybe a redesignation of the current primary structure as of ADU. I think we can probably figure something out.
Okay.
Yeah, definitely.
It sounds like a bad word, but it's a topic like this, but that's okay.
The, the thing of course that, you know, we have no control over is wastewater and that might be a limiting factor. So I would advise that you probably go start talking to a-
I'm a civil engineer. My husband's got a master's in civil engineering.
Amazing, amazing.
You know what, then you know better than I.
You want to be on the planning commission?
I thought you were here.
Maybe next year or something else. I like, I signed up on the DRB because I got into this and I'm like, I need to, I need to deal with it.
Well, hopefully this was helpful.
Yes.
And Nick can also keep you in the loop on, as the ADU rules get expanded, because they are getting expanded.
They will be, yeah.
Relatively short orders.
Hopefully, yeah.
So those can be expanded without town votes and all that?
No, no, it's, we're, we're sort of targeting these ones specifically because, you know, the rules that David brought up are what we have currently. But those are in some cases in weird unpredictable ways contradictory to the state statutes that, you know, that also apply to these. So we're seeking right now to reconcile everything so that our rules don't have any conflict with the state's rules. And there, someone like yourself can look at and wouldn't have to come to a planning commission meeting to get
Yeah.
Guidance on what-
There's a lot of things that flip in these maps. I understand it's kind of a chicken and the egg thing, trying to chase it down.
But for now, if we sit down, I'm sure we can figure out what would work, what your options are. We can kind of put some outside limits on like what your options are and then you can just fill in the blanks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To figure out.
I'll, yeah. Um, I'm working from home tomorrow, but I'll send you an email and we can-
I'm babysitting grandkids tomorrow, so.
Okay. Next week, guys?
Yeah, next week's it then.
Great, let's do it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So there's one question I have about, you know, when you have back acreage and you have in one zoning district and the front acreage is a more restricted amount, if you go, and that's the frontage, I don't think you're allowed to develop the back acreage according to what it's actually in. But it has to follow what the, the paper requires of the, that you're driving through.
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah.
Which flies in the face of logic, guys. There's a lot of new workarounds when the, you know, when the map doesn't reflect what's literally out there for soil or for, because I think in most of that area, you'd need fifteen acres, that three acre zone, just to find a place to perk.
Yeah. So you're saying in your case, it would almost be more accurate if it's flipped? Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Why wouldn't you believe it in that?
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
And I think the same on most of Rappa Road too.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Well, thank you. Did everyone read the minutes? The old minutes are pretty short, so hopefully everyone read them.
I was concerned about the shortness of the minutes, but um-
You are concerned about the shortness of the minutes?
Yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't really-
But I guess it's okay. I was talking to someone, someone said it's probably legal. I just have them almost.
Yeah.
I'm getting, yeah, what the agenda is.
Honestly, I wrote these minutes because I'm pretty pressed on time these days. So, and Donna has not been able to keep up with us sending everything to her.
Well, the old minutes were more like a transcript.
Yeah.
They were on the opposite.
Something in between.
Yeah. Um, well-
You can actually, you know, I mean, it's all recorded, so people can actually go to the meeting and get all the details they want if they're concerned about the details. I think it's okay.
In that case, does someone want to-
Except one thing, things that we both ought to be in.
I don't know. I agree with that, but I don't know, I'm trying to remember back. Have we?
Well, Carolyn's-
Oh, the only, well, we-
Mentioned in the previous.
Oh, Carolyn's approval is not mentioned in the, is that because it's an executive session?
Yeah, that's why I didn't include it. I wasn't sure if I was supposed to.
Because the trails vote is in the April sixth minutes, including, you know, that you seconded on, we get lists, what happened?
I mean, often we don't vote on things. We just have consensus. So that, if that's not reflected in the minutes, then, you know, should we be actually voting so that it appears in the minutes or?
Yeah. Maybe we can try to do that.
If we come to certain decisions on things, yeah, it would be nice to just note it.
Maybe what we'll try to do is if there's specific things that we think should go in the minutes during the meeting, I'll try to take notes.
Great. Yeah, that sounds fine. Or, yeah, or make, yeah, or make a motion, vote on it and that'll go in there as well.
Okay.
And-
Mention during the meeting, you know, we'd like this in the minute.
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, yeah. That works fine by me if it works for you.
Yeah. Anything else? Does someone want to make a motion to, well, I'll make a motion for the April sixth, April twentieth minutes. Is there a second?
So is April twenty, does that reflect Carolyn's, um, is that in there?
Yep.
But it doesn't indicate that.
Well, I think that's, I think that might be because it was an executive session.
Yeah, but we get out of executive session and then-
Oh, we voted after executive session, is that right?
No, we vote in.
We vote in executives.
We vote in the executive session, but afterwards, I think we asked for a letter to be forwarded to the select board to indicating the approval.
Maybe we should, can we add one item? I think that David has a really good point. Can we add one item, like immediately end of executive session that we not voted, we, we agreed to send a letter to the select board with respect to
Carolyn.
Carolyn, yeah, yeah.
Planning commission member.
Okay. That sounds good to me. I will make that and then we can approve these, the amended minutes at the next meeting.
So we'll just approve the April sixth minutes tonight.
Okay.
Or we can amend the twentieth.
Can we just, can we just say vote on those amended? Would that change you?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so new motion. Vote. I move that we approve the Thursday, April sixth minutes and the Thursday, April twentieth minutes as amended. Is there a second? Tim again. Thank you. Paul, David. Thank you, David. All right. Passes unanimously. We're cooking. We're actually not behind at all because the Riverside Flats Village Center designation is getting pushed back because Nick wants to be done with it and just sort of bring it to us as like a final deal and he hasn't been able to finish it yet.
Yeah.
Which takes us to, David, if you don't mind, I know you sent around the five-two and five-three versions. Do you want to like?
Two versions, basically. The first one allowed for, I'll just leave it, copy some of it. That one, on part B, we're dealing with non-conformery, non-conforming accessory dwelling unit. Non-conforming parcels and structures and setbacks and other things are mentioned elsewhere in the regulations and indicate there that the expanding of a non-conforming situation is not allowed. So this is to kind of overcome that, basically. So non-conforming accessory dwelling unit. An accessory dwelling unit, i.e. habitable floor area, within a proposed or existing structure that complies with the requirements for an accessory dwelling unit as described above, but is non-conforming only due to lot size or frontage is a permitted use. I thought we'd simplify things and keep it out of the DRB. I don't like just sending things on to the DRB for them to puzzle over. We can do it in a clear fashion.
So just to clarify this, this is a non-conforming building due to the setback that somebody wants to put an accessory dwelling unit in. Is that, is that what you're talking about there?
If it's, if the non-conforming use is only due to the lot size, it's too small.
Okay, I got you. Yeah.
Yeah. So that, that would be a permitted use basically for an accessory dwelling unit. Or I included frontage. If the frontage is too short, I thought, well, let's, let's just let that go by and allow a accessory dwelling unit. Make it a permitted use. Don't let that pull back a, an accessory dwelling. So any questions about that?
No.
I have one, I have one question. It's not a substantive question. Why, why does it say, for example, habitable floor area?
I thought you wanted that put in there.
Yeah, I thought you might be going to that. I'm wondering, I'm wondering if that's what Brad would, accessory dwelling unit.
It is the habitable floor area. It's, it's really redundant.
No, I know I'm, I'm, I know I'm word spiffing.
When you say habitable floor area, you mean that if somebody's putting a apartment in a garage and-
Yeah, yeah, this is a red concern.
You've got an accessory structure already there.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's half of it, it's just a storage of breaks and so on. You're gonna do the other half of it for an accessory dwelling unit. So it's only that habitable, comes into question.
I think our lawyer, town lawyer, won't like the i.e. habitable floor area, because I think i.e. means for example. And we're trying to say, e.g.s, for example, what is i.e.?
I e. is, is s.
What is it? Do you know what it stands for?
As, for example. It's kind of like, you know, it's a restatement of what was before.
Yeah, I think it means, I think it's like exclusive from, I think it excludes like hypothetical stuff. I think it means like a concrete example rather than a perhaps hypothetical example.
Well, it is, you know, it's, you know, it's in the law, it's such as, I think would go.
Such as?
Yeah, yeah.
It did, I think it leaves the implication, for me at least, maybe I just don't understand it, that there are other things that we also could be referring to there. And I think what we're trying to say is we mean just the habitable floor area.
Yeah.
I was thinking about, this is total word spiffing. I just think, I think our town lawyer might make, might-
Well, okay, yeah, that's, that's no problem.
I think they'll say we're being vague. Okay. Yeah, okay.
Hey, that could, that could, I think, I agree, I think it'd go without, without weakening the overall um, section.
Right.
Um.
So for the frontage, any, or any, any other questions about that?
I think you take out both of those parentheticals, actually, David, I know, sorry, I know we're trying to accommodate what Brad said, but I think the i.e. habitable floor, I just delete it in A and B, I think it makes it more confusing, I'm with, I'm with you. I would just delete both those parentheses, i.e. habitable floor area.
What you could do though is.
Cause it's a.
Is move, move it down to, to read an accessory dwelling unit within a proposed or existing structure, comma, if the habitable floor area, comma.
So where's that standing?
So it's after existing structure.
Existing structure.
Yeah, just a few words on.
I see what you're saying, I'll read that better.
And I think in the accessory dwelling unit above, in A, you'd have to do a similar thing. Cause you have i.e. habitable floor area.
Well, let's see, I don't know, it's um.
Yeah.
Within a proposed or existing structure, habitable floor area.
I, I think what we do, and with some crazy, I think in A3, I think we can fix all of this by saying the habitable floor area of the accessory dwelling unit. So, A3 would just read the habitable floor area of the accessory dwelling unit, and then we can just delete the other references.
Well, no, then that's sort of implies that the accessory dwelling unit is, can be bigger than the habitable floor area.
Hmm. Fair.
Well.
But it can be, it can be in our thing, cause we're saying, that's the exact scenario we're dealing with, right? Brad brought up a garage that has an ADU upstairs.
Yeah, and you can build it all at once, and the only part you have to worry about size is the habitable part of it. Is that true?
I think, are we opening um? I don't know, it depends on how.
Are we opening up Pandora's box?
That's, that's true, I mean, that's how, how, that's how he's gonna interpret the, the rules, is what's habitable, habitable.
I'm just looking things up here, I think it's important to remember that we already have a workable definition for the term dwelling unit. Um, and that reads dwelling unit, a portion, a building or portion thereof designed, constructed, or used as separate living quarters for one family, including any domestic employees, blah, 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 which includes food preparation, sleeping, and sanitary facilities. This definition specifically excludes boarding or rooming houses, residential care facilities in hotels. So, I think that the definition of dwelling unit already.
Yeah.
Is narrow enough to exclude areas of the, of a structure that may, that, that may be part of that dwelling unit and vice versa, that aren't for that purpose. So I think that when we talk about a dwelling unit or an accessory dwelling unit, what we're really talking about is just the parts that are devoted to, as this reads, um, separate living quarters, including food preparation, sleeping, and sanitary facilities, so.
And that's dwelling unit?
That's dwelling unit, that's the definition of dwelling unit, and if you go to accessory dwelling unit, that reads dwelling accessory. A secondary dwelling unit established in conjunction with and clearly subordinate to a single-family dwelling, which is retained in common ownership, is located within, attached to, or on the same lot as the primary dwelling, and which otherwise meets applicable regulations, applicable requirements of these regulations. So, I don't think we really need to get ourselves twisted around the axle trying to define what is and what isn't part of an accessory dwelling unit based on these definitions, which I think are quite clear enough. So, and if someone says, you know, to i.e., uh, if someone says, uh, I have an accessory, I want to, can you use part of my barn for an accessory dwelling unit, how much square footage can I go up to, I'd say, well, you know, 30% or 1,000. Uh, and, you know, you tell me how much of that is gonna use, you know, how much of that of, of your barn is gonna be used up for that, or you're gonna have to add to it to get to that, whatever, but as far as I'm concerned, these are the definitions I'd be going off of, and when someone talks about a dwelling unit, they're talking about the parts devoted to that dwelling unit.
So you're suggesting we just delete both of these parentheticals that say habitable floor area because we're good?
I think we can, I think we can totally.
Yeah.
Totally simplify it.
That's clear, for sure.
Good.
Thank you, David, sorry.
No, it's, it's a good thing to establish that, yeah.
Okay, so um, anything else about um, that B, first paragraph there?
B first paragraph.
Which allows as a permitted use, an accessory dwelling in a lot that is of a non-conforming size or.
Let me ask you an annoying question, what if it's non-conforming due to lot size and frontage?
Well, um. It, that doesn't matter, I don't think that would apply, really, no.
Do you, cause right now, the way it's written, if it was non-conforming due to both, you're out of luck, but if it's non-conforming due to one, then it's permitted. I just wanna make sure that's what our intention is. Is that our, is that what everyone thinks?
I don't think it matters.
I don't even, I'm not entirely sure this is necessary in the first place, because our, our general regulations about non-conforming lots allow for their development, um, as long as it doesn't increase the degree of non-conformance, so.
Yeah, so this.
Well, if you.
Non-conformant, right?
This is increasing.
Yeah, this goes to last week's conversation, two weeks ago.
Yeah.
Sorry, I was just.
Yeah. I mean, wasn't clear what I was saying.
So this is getting around that, it's saying, in spite of that, it will be allowed. You can increase non- conformity with an accessory dwelling unit with these conditions.
Yeah, I think that's important.
Yeah.
To be able to take a non-conforming lot and increase its non-conformity, so it makes it easier for people to.
Right.
Build an ADU, I think that's important, but yeah.
Well, what's interesting though is that Nick read it differently, so do we need to correct word? I'm totally on the same page with what David's trying to do, but.
Yeah.
That's not how you write it, you're the one who reads these rules, so do you think we need to change the word or anything?
I'm just, I just, maybe it's that I didn't get enough sleep last night or something, but for some reason, I'm just thinking about this, and this, this feels, I'm just gonna try to walk my, walk you guys through my, my, my feeling about this, um, you're allowed, you have a pre-existing non-conforming lot, you're allowed to develop it the same way you would uh, a conforming lot, right? And that would include unaccept, adding an accessory dwelling unit if that, if the lot.
Can we use a different hypothetical, though, just to walk through?
Okay, sure.
Let's say it's a house here.
Yep.
In, on Hill Center.
Yeah, the lot is.
It already has a house on it.
Already has a lot.
It's non-conforming.
Yeah.
And they wanna put underneath.
Let's say it doesn't have enough frontage, and.
And it's too small.
Yeah, exactly, you couldn't create that lot as, as, like, through subdivision now, or boundary line adjustment, but it's already got the house, so it's pre-existing non-conforming. I don't think that there's anything in our regulations that would prevent someone from adding an ADU onto that, presuming that they aren't encroaching on a setback, they aren't hit, like, exceed, exceeding the, the building's square footage.
Doesn't it make it more non-conforming?
Yeah.
This is the just.
I don't think it would.
I guess it does, and expanding the, the house, so you're allowed to.
But a non-conforming lot isn't, doesn't, all, having a non-conforming lot doesn't cap the, doesn't mean, doesn't say that you can't add structures to the lot, it just means that, that the lot could be created, is, is, is known to be substandard in terms of the dimensional standards we apply to new lots being created, it doesn't mean that, just because, like, like if I had, if I had a, let's say we, we'll go back to this hypothetical house here in town, it's on one-third of an acre, so, and it doesn't have enough uh, frontage, but that doesn't mean that I can't build anything on it. In fact, we have this whole section on non-conforming lots, 3.8, it says, in fact, it's a non-conforming lot, it can be developed. I would have to still, um, right, I mean, I'm, I'm missing something here.
Well, you can be developed, if you make it, if it's more, if, as long as it's not more non-conforming, cause I went through this on our, our house on Stevensville. That, we had a garage, we built a garage, but we couldn't build the garage if it was made, if it was more non-conforming than the house already was.
And what was the issue with the conformance of the garage?
It was a setback from the.
Yes, that's a setback issue.
Yeah.
That's different, that's separate and apart from the lot itself being non-conforming.
Did you have built the garage if you moved it? Did you have?
Not in particular.
Like, let's say that, yes, you see, you added no more non-conforming than the house. Yeah, so let's say there was no setback requirement, let's say you could build like there, just that didn't exist, you'd still be able to, you would have been able to build that garage. And because there's nothing in our regu, and my argument is, there's nothing in our regulations that prevents you from developing a non-conforming lot as long as it's legally in existence in when these regulations were.
Well, this is just confirming that, making certain that there's no cert, uncertainty about it.
Yeah.
There seems to be some uh, you know, question about it.
Yeah.
A question could be raised, a neighbor might come in and say, hey, look, you can't do this because it says this.
Yeah.
This would say, well, no, right here, it says, yes, you can.
Mm hmm, mm hmm.
So, it may be redundant, but it may be good to have that.
Okay. I buy that.
I sort of break with David, because I think particularly on ADUs could be, you could generate a little conflict if a neighbor doesn't like it, I don't know, maybe, maybe I'm wrong about that, I hope I am, but it seems like his situation could come up.
Yeah. So, okay, so um, that paragraph, okay? Oh my.
I mean, my only comment is, just, and maybe it's not worth addressing, but the way I read this sentence, it's, if it was non-conforming based on both lot size and frontage, I, I would, if I was reading this, I'd say, well, ah, well, ah, you can't do it, you only get one of the two, so I just wanna make sure that's our intention. Particularly frankly, if Nick's correct, and right now, the way the rules are written, it doesn't matter, let's say Nick's interpretation is right, and they're right now, you could just build it. We could be unintentionally tightening it, actually.
Yeah.
Like an indoor.
Yes.
I, I mean, I'm, I don't want to be a stick in the mud, but I really do think that this is unnecessary, and I think that we should avoid adding redundant regulations in whenever possible.
Could you point us to, just to make everyone comfortable?
Yeah.
Maybe, and then we can decide.
Yeah.
Should you point us to what, where, why you think that?
So, um, yeah, I will, I will read that, I will read aloud what I'm talking about, and, oh my, we've been running um, this uh, view of um, Sam Moore wrote this.
Could you, could you pop it up on the screen?
That's what I'm gonna do, yeah, yeah, I'll pull this up here, so, um, but basically, if anyone's following along at home, or has their own copy of the regulations, I'd point you to section 3.8, which addresses um, non-conforming lots, and in section 3.8, which we will, which we are about to get to, we will read some stuff. And I will have that stuff up on the screen. Uh, just a second, there we go, so, alright, so, in section 3.8, here, this is page 37 of our regulations, you can read that in A, through 3.8A, any lot in separate, individual, separate, and non-affiliated ownership from surrounding properties legally in existence on the effective date of these regulations may be developed for the purposes allowed in the district in which it is located, even though not conforming to the minimum lot size requirements if the lot is not less than one-eighth of an acre, and has a minimum of that, so, accepting that, accepting tiny little lots that are less than an acre, and no bigger than 40 feet wide or deep, any non-conforming lot can be developed as though it is conforming. And one of the things that you're allowed to do with a conforming lot in Underhill is build an accessory dwelling unit, assuming that that lot is for, that, 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 the perp, that that lot's use is currently single-family home. So, my argument is that, given that you already have permission to do that with a non-conforming parcel, we don't need any further language when discussing the individual use standard for, specific use standards for accessory dwelling units that protects people's right to build an ADU on a non-conforming lot. We do need to address some other gray areas about, about setbacks, and I think because we do, be, be, do, because we do have different setbacks for accessory, uh, for certain different uses and types of, of, of structures, but as far as non-conforming lots, generally speaking, I think that the general regulations apply well enough that, that there shouldn't be an issue. So, for instance, if someone came to me and said, I have, you know, I wanna, again, I, you know, if Kale came to me, I think, I'm pretty sure his house is on a non-conforming lot, and he said.
Yeah, let's pick on Kale.
Yeah, let's pick on Kale, he's not, uh, sorry, Kale, uh, this is what you got, um, if, yeah, let's say Kale wanted to put in an accessory dwelling unit in his house, or whatever, if they wanted to convert part of it or something like that, that's a non-conforming lot, um, he would be allowed to do it. If he, same as if he wanted to convert his house to a duplex, that would also be, that would also be allowable, because it's a, it's a non-conforming lot, but it's already, it was legally in existence as of March 2nd, 2011, and it doesn't increase the degree of non- conformity.
As long as he doesn't add on to it.
I mean, even then, if he was building up, I mean, again, the, and then, at that point, you're getting into the question of, is the reason that, why it would be, was the reason because of a setback issue, or like, the, the idea of a, of a setback violation and just non-conforming due to saw, due, due to lot size are separate issues, so I think that there's plenty of dispensation in the regulations already to protect people who have lots that are non-conforming due to frontage or set, or, or a lot size.
Well, this, um, you know, reading this um, section 3.8 again, it says, um, even though not conforming to minimum lot size requirements, what are all? But not just the size of the lot, but it's also other size requirements.
Um, I will disagree with you there, because we, in other places, it refers to lot layout and dimensional standards when they're talking about that other stuff. So I think this does apply narrowly just to the acreage of the lot, or square footage of the lot, um, and then, and I, and I would say, I would continue to.
Frontage doesn't, it doesn't have the frontage, then it, it does not um.
It's not allowed.
Then you're not allowed.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, this is silent on frontage, definitely, um, unless I can find something else.
Clarify, you know, this non-conforming lot section, all the way through, it needs to be gone over and um, redone, I think, cause there's some confusing elements in it.
The, oh, in, in, in 3.8?
Yes.
Probably not a bad idea, yeah, probably not a bad idea.
Okay, well, okay, so let's um, let's go back to the accessory dwelling unit and put on the calendar, or the head, anyway, going over non-conforming lots, and we can make sure that it's clear there.
Yeah.
You know, what we're doing in the accessory lots, and also clarify other ambiguities in that whole section.
So we're deleting this and then doing it in 3.8, is that what you're saying, David? Um. We're deleting part of B?
Yeah, because.
Dealing with it in 3.8?
Because there's already a section on a non-conforming.
But do we need the one and two?
Yeah, there are other.
We should talk about those, for sure, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
But I, I, I like that, I think it's probably best to clarify.
Yeah.
Frontage as well, put that in, consider that in free play.
I'll take care of any ambiguities that might happen there, also.
So, one and two are interesting, and I think, I think we're kinda getting to the, getting to the nut here, um. Number one, I think that might potentially be redundant, but I'm open to the idea of, of keeping it in there. Wetland setbacks, as Brad will point out, and he's correct, are, while we do have language in our regulations that prevent building in a wetland setback, the length of the, we, the, 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 the size of those setbacks is really determined by state statute, and someone seeking to, to build in one would.
Well, say it's 50 feet.
Yeah.
We say 100 feet.
Oh, do we?
Yeah.
Is that, okay.
So, um.
Do you mean a stricter one there?
You know. The lot could be looked at and said, you know, well, you know, this extra fifty feet is really not going to create problems in this situation, so, okay. So it might be something that that would be. Put forward to the development review board.
And then.
That'd be a judgment issue. Look at it and see.
Yeah. So I think that the setback, the, the. The lot line setback. Is worth drilling down on, um, because. We were talking about this last time as well. Because I think we need to be really clear about exactly. What setbacks we're talking about and under which circumstances those setbacks are invoked. Because we've got a number of different ways that unlike a single family home. Where it's either kind of being built from the ground up. Or it's being renovated. An ADU can come into being be put through a, through like a conversion or renovation. As well as being built from the ground up. So a lot of, there are more paths, there are more potential. ADUs out there, I think, like, you know, than there are, let's say, single family homes or businesses or other structures and uses. So there's more gray areas about when an ADU, which lot, which things apply to an ADU. And we've talked about these a lot, so I do think it's important to try to, to try to get to that, um.
So we did, you know, we talked about, um. The, um, making the, um. Principal and accessory, uh, structures, um, equalizing the, uh, setbacks for the whole village centers.
Yeah, I love that. That's great. I think that's a great step in the right.
They're just in the village centers, not in the other.
Right, not in the other areas. The other, we have, we have pretty good acreage, basically.
You did agree.
I think we agreed on that.
So the, yes, the middle center ones are pretty much.
So that takes care of that particular problem.
And you have that change in your master.
I do, yeah. So. I got a question about this, so. It, in the, uh, other districts, you're gonna leave the, the, uh, ADU setbacks are gonna be the same as, uh. A, uh. It, you know, it, oh, it has to be the same as.
That's what we've got to find out.
Yeah, but, well, I think, I, I kind of disagree with this.
Okay.
So, but that's, I mean, maybe we should go around the table and say.
Yeah, I think that's what we have to find out is that. So just to bring everyone up to speed, as, as Brian pointed out, there. In this, in the draft version of this, there's no longer any difference between. Principal and accessory setbacks in the village center zoning districts. So what we're talking about here. Doesn't really matter. There's gonna be only one set setback in the village center for any structure or any use. Simple as.
And for Underhill Center, it's twelve?
If you look at the, are you, page eight is, uh, the chart.
Yeah.
Well, can I ask you one thing?
Yeah.
I actually don't think that's what David's language says. I don't know if this is how David intended it though.
Yeah.
I think under David's, if the nonconformances only due to setback. From a neighbor's property line, I mean, in theory. No, but in the five foot right on the property, as long as the neighbor says, yes.
Yeah.
That, I read David's five two version to say, that, I don't know if this is what you intended, David.
Yeah.
But. If I wanted to build one and I was next door to Kale, and I was like, hey, Kale, do you mind if I build this one inch from your property line? He was like, I don't care. Then I'd be able to build it. I, is that what you intended?
Well, that's what I intended on the, um.
So that is different because basically what this is saying is the setbacks.
Oh, actually, no, I'm saying that it could, you could, you could, um. Um. You know, go, well. With, with, in changing the setbacks for the center and the million center, it makes it mute for these, uh.
Okay, so he is saying what you said.
Yeah.
Then I think this language would need to change because I think the way it reads right now, it says. I think it could be interpreted to, to mean that your neighbor could waive off on any setback.
But isn't that the one that, um, David withdrew? You said you don't want to pursue that one, or you do?
I thought, maybe, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Position.
Yeah.
So I did, uh, did first three when I was back.
Okay, so you. That's what we've been looking at here with, yes, exactly. So that's, that one reads, the following is an alternative draft to be considered with draft. Uh, May second, twenty twenty three.
Can you see what I'm saying? No, I'm not arguing for that. I'm not, I have no, I don't even know what I think about this, to be honest, but I think if you give this language its most generous interpretation. If we wanted to do it, a neighbor could waive any setback.
It's carte blanche to, to wait, to build and setbacks. Yeah, I don't think that would.
No, 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 it's not carte blanche. It's carte blanche to ask for a waiver.
Yeah, yeah. Well, keep in mind, the DRB can only, yeah. I don't even think we, we would, I don't even think we could really delegate that power to individuals. I think that DRB solely holds the power to.
Get a waiver.
Give out waivers.
Yeah, you can't ask your neighbor.
And even.
That would be a waiver, right.
And even then, the DRB can only reduce a waiver up to fifty percent. At that, at, and, or sorry, a, a, a setback up to fifty percent. That's the only can give out for a waiver. They can't make them go away. Now, you can get a variance. Um, but that's a different process that quite frankly, I don't fully understand, um, because everyone, uh, the DRB is always like, we're not going there. So basically. Um, yeah, so basically you can, I, I think that, I just think that the neighbor. Permission thing is opening up a big can of worms for a variety of reasons, and so. If, like, I can see where you're going with it, and I think it's not an idea that I think we should totally throw away, but. I still think we need to figure out what standards, what setback standards in regard, like what lot line setbacks. Standards we need. We need to figure out how those applied to ADUs before we talk about, like. Delegating some of that decision-making power to neighbors. Because, so, okay, so just to summarize.
Takes you back to the other district.
Yeah, so where we're at is basically, this is a moot point for the, the, the village districts because there is no difference between. In our draft, there will be no difference between accessory and principal. Uh, uses and structures, there are just gonna be one set setbacks that you gotta meet.
So you're looking at the chart on page eight?
Yeah, yeah.
So that, so in the village.
Yeah.
Centers, they're the same setback.
Same thing, yeah. You got, you got a house.
Pop that page up.
Yeah, you got a house, you got a, a barn, whatever, it's gotta meet the same setbacks. Regardless, regardless of what it is, or, or, you know, that's, that's, that's the proposal. Keep in mind, this hasn't been. It's not, not to.
There's another item at, an asterisk. Statement on this chart that should be deleted, I noticed this.
Oh, yeah.
Today, it, it says, uh, accessory. Units. Or, or, um. They need to be behind the lot, this.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That should be deleted.
Yeah.
Because that's, that's not even enforced, I don't know.
Yeah, it's not enforced.
It's so, you know what I mean?
Oh, yeah, good catch.
That's a good point.
Yeah, so we should just delete that, because, uh. I, I don't see the point in it, and it, and it really prohibits people from. Like, working, doing the most logical thing, basically. If you have a, a lot and the accessory structure shall be located at or behind the front building line of the principal structure.
Yeah.
I mean, that. That really eliminates a lot of possibilities on a smaller lot.
Yeah, and when we go through, we see where that would apply, um. Accessory, where does that even apply?
It applies under accessory, up, up above.
Yeah.
House for accessory structures.
Yeah.
Which, uh. You know, because.
It's in Underhill flats only.
Oh, is that?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I got, thank you, I could catch that.
I thought that applied.
I was gonna say, that's not how we did our.
Yeah, right.
No, I gotta broom all, it's all.
So. You want? Yeah.
But I'd like to make a point about the setbacks, uh, for, uh. For the other, uh, districts.
Yes.
Uh. If you, if you make them the same as the house, it really eliminates a lot of possibilities somebody might have on their property. I mean, I understand. And respect that, you know, the neighbor might not want. That accessory dwelling unit twenty feet from their property line, but all of a sudden, it, on a three acre lot, it eliminates. You might have to put another driveway in or another road in to access it, so it makes more sense to me. Like, I think in my neighborhood, there are probably seven three acre lots that have been developed in the last, uh. Five years of them, and if. The accessory, and every one of them has an accessory dwelling unit permit, I think. So. If. If all of a sudden they have to be fifty feet instead of twenty feet from the sideline. It, it just makes everything so much more crammed in as far as the house. And the accessory dwelling unit right next to each other. So, but that's my, my personal opinion, and I.
Yeah.
I think every situation is different, and, and previously, if. They, when they were dealing with ADUs and the, the DRB was. It was a conditional use permit probably fifteen years ago, if I remember right, but. The, that was, that really, you know, had, was, gave the, uh, the community ability to have input as, as to how. It affected each, you know, the neighbors, you know, the neighbor could say, I don't want it right there, I want it to be fifty feet or whatever, so.
So is your argument just for rural residential then?
No, it's for acres. No, it's for all the, all the residential water conservation and, you know, everything except for flats, yeah.
Yeah.
So would you make them all thirty, twenty, twenty?
No, because they're, they're different, right? Uh, wait a minute.
For accessory, they're the same.
They're all thirty, twenty, twenty.
For the, for accessories.
Yeah, I mean, that seems because.
Well, the reason for that probably is privacy, noise, and so on. That's probably why the setbacks are, are larger there, you know, I'm not necessarily saying that. That's something that, um, we ought to pay a lot of attention to, but I think that's probably the reason. Or the kind of protection of, um, you know, your neighbors, um.
Right, so you could build a house in one part of the property that's farther from the lot lines. And you can build a, a barn a little bit closer with the assumption that there aren't going to be people in the barn all the time.
Yeah.
Making noise the way that they would in a house.
Right.
So.
Here's another possibility that I thought of.
Right.
Just goes, what if somebody says, well, I got a garage, it's twenty feet from my sideline.
My next question.
Yeah, twenty feet from my sideline, and I want, want to put a accessory dwelling unit in it. Well, uh, well, no, you can't because you're, so now what do I do? You know what I mean? So I think it really is restrictive as far as. You, the potential for people to build an ADU, and I think of some of the lots, the smaller lots in town. That have, that have worked on or whatever, and if, if you can't, if it has to be right next to the house, it just wouldn't be right, you know, it just wouldn't. Fit in.
And it would also, the other potential issue with that is that it would eliminate, if you couldn't redevelop. Uh. Uh, an accessory structure due to the lot line setback into an ADU. Then that eliminates a lot of the potential places where ADUs could be converted.
Yeah.
Because for a lot of people, the, aren't, they aren't gonna build a new structure, but they might take a barn, an existing barn or carriage house or whatever.
Right.
And convert that into an ADU. And that thing might be located. You know, closer to the lot line than you'd allow a single family home to fill.
Right, I disagree with any of what you're saying necessarily, but I do think. Something about me, that there's something about it that strikes me as like. It's weird in some way for me to take, because like in the center and flats.
Yeah.
Like, the difference really wasn't that much. We're talking about like five feet, so you could sort of say people had the expectation there. To me, it's a little weird to, I'll just take the biggest ones and make the best example. Let's say I take Mount Mansfield or Soil and Water. We're making a significant reduction. Like fifty five foot difference.
Mm hmm.
And I don't think it's too hard for someone who lives in one of those, well, I mean, I live in one of them, but like, and let's speak a hypothetical person, it's not a real situation for me, and just because of. Where we are, but like. I don't think it's a crazy argument for someone where it is a realistic possibility for them to say like, whoa, 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 like, we're chopping this by two thirds. Like, the difference to where someone could be living.
Mm hmm.
I get the counter arguments, like, well, too bad, we're trying to increase the availability of ADUs, but it's a pretty significant. Reduction, that's, I guess, a.
It is. So.
We should make some kind of, um, modern, some kind of middle ground on, uh.
I have an idea about that.
It's your idea.
My idea is that, um, rehab, like adaptation of, uh, excess of. Structures, I'm just gonna say structures in general. To an ADU. So taking an old str- an existing structure. Whatever, does whatever. Turning it into an ADU, so it's not being lived in, but you want to turn it into an ADU, that should be permitted by right. As long as that structure meets the, the accessory structure. Um, minimum, uh, setbacks for the zoning district in which it's located, but for new builds. The, the, uh, this, the principal setback would, would apply.
So if you've got an existing structure that, um, according to this, um, accessory, uh, lot is, um, twenty feet.
Yep.
From the border.
Yep.
You could build in that.
Yeah, so let's say I live in, so, I live in the Mount Mansfield.
That's, okay, I'm gonna do that this year, I'm gonna put it there.
Yeah.
Here, oh, I'm gonna put an accessory dwelling.
Yeah, there you go. I mean, this is. I think it's just keep it simple because I, I think, uh. You know, maybe, I'm thinking of your house, for example, if you didn't have issues with. Building one in a wetland or whatever, if there was no wetland there, you wouldn't want it right ne- next to your house.
Right.
You'd want it far away, and typically in the, in the, uh, uh, the scenic preservation district, the houses aren't. Right on the lot line to begin with, so.
Right.
So, you know, they're. Yeah, I, I, I think it's, you have, it, just driving around town. And looking at every situation, it, it makes sense to keep it. Where it is right now to me, but.
How does everyone, how do? Did we fill Bart, Boris? So Roy, you're saying you'd like to keep the setbacks for accessory dwellings in the rural areas as it is now?
Yeah.
As in?
As opposed to?
Make them the same as a, the house is.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So more, more permissive?
No, the accessory dwelling unit is the same as a, uh.
Principal.
Accessory.
Accessory building.
Accessory building.
He wants them moving it, make it.
Yes.
Yeah. You know, you got your house setback, and you have the accessory. Building setback, which is closer to the lot line. I think the accessory dwelling unit should be closer to the lot.
So when you, so to rephrase what you're saying, is that we would treat an accessory dwelling unit. As an accessory structure for the purposes of building.
Doesn't matter if it's a shed, barn, ADU.
Exactly. We all treat it just like one thing.
And it would apply to. The centered flats and everything else.
No, not to the flats, not into the village districts, just the, the rural.
Because we're eliminating this, just, we're eliminating the difference between principal accessory and the village districts.
Yeah.
So there wouldn't be any, any difference to, to determine, but.
We're doing that here though, too. It'd all be the same. For eliminating the difference, oh, you're saying we're eliminating the difference between principal and all accessories?
Yes, exactly, yeah.
Never mind, never mind, never mind.
So all buildings treated exactly the same, no matter the purpose, in the village centers, but in the rural. Areas, we, we distinguish between the principal building and any accessories. We would just treat an ADU like an accessory in all cases. And that applies to, just to, just, I'm, I'm just, I'm not advocating this, I'm just clarifying. Would that apply to new builds and conversions?
Let's go, let's go around and see what people think. What do you think, Roy? Go ahead. Or Boris?
No, no, I'm kind of confused.
I was just gonna, I was just, I was just gonna.
Okay, here.
We don't have a clear, clear, uh, question actually at this point. I mean, there's several different ideas out on.
Well, let's take Roy's original idea and see how people feel about that. So there's, it's just. An ADU gets treated like an accessory building.
In the three, five, ten, and fifteen acre.
Yeah, same as a barn, same as a shed, no difference if it's a rehab or a new build, just to pick the easiest.
Okay, and we're not saying that it's gonna be twenty, twenty feet. Or twenty.
It would be.
Okay, and we're not saying that it's going to be twenty, twenty feet or twenty, thirty, twenty, twenty feet across everything. We're just talking about what you're saying. And we may change this idea, whether it's thirty, twenty, twenty. If we make it um, uh, I don't know what, you know, thirty, thirty, thirty or whatever.
Sure. But for now, right. Exactly, David. So how do people feel feel about this, including do you think we would need to change the distances as David's saying, or like, how do you feel about that?
That's a separate issue.
Yeah.
Roy, your idea, it's um, it's more permissive.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Far more, far more permissive. Yeah, especially in a three acre uh, lot. You know, because you have more possibilities.
Yep. And it's simpler.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So would you be supportive part of just the simple ADUs meet the accessories in all in rural residential water conservation, scenic preservation, soil and water?
Right.
Okay. Boris? I think, I think I understand. So last time we we talked about making the flats and Underhill Center more permissive by eliminating the difference between a structure and a dwelling, accessory structure and accessory dwelling, right? So essentially, are we, are we not just extending that to the rural?
Not quite. In the, the difference is, so you see, we have principal versus accessory.
Make them all same here, but that may change.
Yeah, well, you see, you see how we've got the difference between principal accessory. So say you've got, say you've got a house, a lot with a house on it. That's your, the house is the principal structure and principal use. So that, so in that case, these setbacks would apply. If you wanted to build a barn or whatever on that same lot, then this would apply. Um, so what we're, what we've, what we voted to do, or what you voted to do, was to eliminate the difference and just go with, and just treat all structures in the flats and in the center the same for the purposes of setbacks. So doesn't matter if you're proposing building a house, a barn, an ADU, a str- uh, you know, a shed, a sauna, a whatever, a retail store. It only has one setback that you have to meet. As long as you meet that setback, you're good.
And I can't remember what. We're keeping house and accessory separate, but saying ADU has to be accessory.
Well.
We went with the shorter, the the.
The accessory.
Yeah, we went as, we went more permissive.
Okay. So then you've got, that leaves the other, so assuming that that's a fait accompli, that leaves the four other ones, the rural, um, the districts. So the question now becomes does, what does an ADU count as? Should it be counted as a principal or should it be counted as an accessory? And the proposal that Roy has put out is treat them all like an accessory dwelling. Treat all accessory dwelling units like an accessory structure, apply the accessory setbacks to an ADU, whether it be new build or whether it be a conversion of an existing structure. Now, I want to point out that does not mean that you have carte blanche to build in the setback. If the structure is non-conforming because it's already in a setback. Let's say you have an old house, an old, you know, and someone a million years ago built a barn right on the lot line and you bought the place and it's non, in the existing non-conforming, you don't get to just make an, it's an ADU in that, in that non-conforming uh, building because that would be increasing the degree of non-conformance. Does that make sense?
I don't know. I don't think that, let's just disregard that for now. Yeah, because that's too confusing.
I just wanted to put that out there and say, there is.
Yeah, but I think I disagree with you on that one too, but we're just sticking to the thirty, twenty, twenty.
Yeah.
For accessory structures and accessory dwelling units, instead of making it, instead of making it uh, uh, thirty, fifty, fifty.
Right.
And thirty, and thirty seventy-five, seventy-five, okay? Keep it thirty, twenty, twenty for all those.
Well, that's, that's a separate issue.
No, that's what we're talking about. That's what I think we should do.
Talking about making um, the um, principal and the accessory, you know, structures having the same setbacks.
Only, only for the down, only for the village centers.
Yeah.
That's the, we 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 determine that, yes.
So when we say the same setback, we're talking about.
What you see there?
Same, same as they are now or? It's still confusing.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I think what we're getting confused is, is like, we say make it the same, does it? We're not saying make it the same number as the center and water conservation, for example.
No. We're saying treat ADUs like a shed.
Same thing.
Yeah. Treat ADUs like a barn.
Yeah, we should be careful. Boris is like, it's easy to get this confused. We have to be very precise.
Yeah, just forget, disregard the first two columns.
Yeah.
And see where it says accessory, accessory, front, side, rear, you know, the thirty, thirty, twenty, twenty, and then the thirty. Uh, yeah, those, those, keep, that's what we've got, that's what an accessory structure is, and that's what an accessory dwelling unit setback should be. And that's the way the the law reads right now.
It is.
Yeah, so I think we should just keep it that way. We just have to add accessory dwelling unit in in uh, another, another column there.
Yeah.
Or another row right there.
Yeah.
You know, and, yeah, and but we'll keep those setbacks because, uh, you know, I just, it just seems like if, if you, if you make them larger, thirty, fifty, fifty, say in the three acre zone, somebody's gonna have to put another road in to get to a place that's logical to build an ADU, whereas if if it's closer to the lot line, they might not have to do that. So.
Is everyone on the same page now about what we're discussing?
Hmm. I have a question, just for clarity. So if, if in a rural district, you have a you have an existing, existing lot with a house and had a building envelope attached to it, how how does that affect the the flexibility?
Oh, yeah, good question. It's a good question.
Because I think if you have a, you have set building envelope, which disregards the setbacks essentially, then all of a sudden you say you can, now you can build another house.
Yeah.
Uh, a lot closer to somebody else's uh, side yard, which you would have been able to previously, that might be an issue for.
Yeah.
Privacy for somebody who.
Interesting question, yeah.
I want to, I want to share with, share with you your, your building envelope experience, right, and and.
Oh, when we had ours expanded?
Yeah, you, you can eliminate the building envelope.
You can.
Because there are no building envelopes going forward.
Yeah, they just told me, I I just wanted to basically expand our building envelope a tiny bit for the barn and.
Yeah.
Andrew.
Yeah.
Was like, we gotta pay to do this. Why wouldn't you just make it as big as possible? I'm like, all right, sure.
In the town area, we can increase density and.
Yeah.
And 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 buildings, that would be one thing, but in the rural area where you have less buildings and there's more appreciation of having your, your own piece of land that somebody was, could, could change and say we can build right next to you.
Right.
In my dealing with the DRB so far, building envelopes have only applied to principal structures. So it's only for the, for the principal use.
The building envelopes only for the principal structure?
That's what we've, that's, that's how we've, the, the DRB decisions that have been written, that I've worked on, have referred to it. But those have also been somewhat special cases, so maybe that's not the way it's been done.
Can the building envelope violate the setback rules though? I'm trying to understand.
No, setback rules from the building envelope. The building envelope is an extra layer of discretion that the DRB adds to specific subdivisions.
Got it.
As they come up.
So what's your concern?
Thinking of, of my particular logic, as an example, that our, that our house is quite a distance from our neighbor. Um, and away from setback, where, where if I could build within twenty feet of his side yard, I could put a accessory dwelling like right next to his yard.
Yeah.
Away from my house. Which might be an issue for the neighbor.
I mean, that is what I think is the counter argument. I don't even know how I feel about it. I think the counter argument is will people move to the Mount Mansfield Preservation District because they like that setback from the residents? And if we put it in the accessory line, then we're changing that. I guess the counter to that is who cares, we want to, we want to encourage accessory dwelling. That's why I was curious.
Every situation is different, you know, it's just like, yeah, yeah.
One of my concerns is um, that we do this for now and the whole definition is that it's an accessory dwelling, you know, and and it's the owner and whatever. Um, but ten years from now, somebody sells the lot and then we're going to have all of these subdivision requests because it's a whole separate, it's a whole separate dwelling. So we're just encouraging future subdivision by having separate dwellings like this. And I I really have a concern about that. You know, if it was right next to the existing one, then there wouldn't be as much incentive to then subdivide in the future.
Yeah. How would we address that in your mind without violating the state rules? I don't know that we can, because you can't, they get more restrictive than the primary residents, right?
So if you, what you're saying is if somebody has, has a house in a ten acre zone and they put an ADU, oh no, in the in the three acre zone, but they have ten acres and they put an ADU on that ten acres, uh, that they might subdivide that off. Is that what you're saying? Like, so.
Later on down the line.
Yeah, but they, but they can take that ten acres, if they have ten acres in the three acre zone, they can take that and turn it into three lots anyway, from, if they have.
Yeah. But if you have a house on it right now, okay, so I have a principal house, I build an ADU that's separate because I want my daughter to live there. That goes on, but then we sell the whole parcel and um, the owner then wants to subdivide because, well, you can make money off from doing that. Whereas if it was one lot with one residence and an addition, you know, the incentive to subdivide would be much less. Yeah, people can subdivide all the time, but I'm just saying, if you're, if you put that separate dwelling there, then then you have uh, expand the whole um, income you can get off from something.
Right.
The states, and we can't do that, that would.
Well, not right now.
It would be more restrictive, basically.
But what we could do is say that it has to be, you know, within a certain distance of the primary dwelling or something that makes it less desirable to take a ten acre lot and put.
You're almost talking about the opposite of setbacks. We're talking about having a rule that says it needs to be within X of the primary.
I don't know. I don't know.
This is why I'm saying that um, all accessory uh, structures should be within four hundred feet from the primary dwelling.
Right.
Yeah, so this is, this is why, this is why I mentioned um, a difference between new build and conversion, because I think people need to be able to give, be, exercise the right to convert structures into ADUs, because one of the goals of having an ADU ordinance is to allow people to is to lower the cost of housing and 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 make, you know, clever and uh, creative reuse of existing structures. Um, but on the other, right, exactly, we have to. On the other hand, we want to, we want to discourage you know, like sprawling development, even on a micro sense of like sprawling to the edges of a lot. So that's why I suggested adhering to the principal structure setbacks for a new build that would, that would include an ADU but allow reuse of like adaptation of a structure built originally to be an accessory structure.
Well, you know, next year I change my mind.
Well, I mean, and that's their, and that's, if they want to do that, then they can do that, but that means that they're gonna have to.
Mean anything.
Well, not necessarily, because practically speaking, that person's still gonna have to put in a septic system. They're gonna have to put in a driveway. They're gonna have to build the thing that is, so if you really, if you really want to like be cynical about it and and put yourself in the mind of someone who's, who's, who's being so and say, oh, I'm gonna cheat the rules and get my ADU way over here by doing a two-stage thing. There, that still requires an awful lot of planning and investment, and I think that that alone is going to discourage a lot of people.
And that's not cheating the rules. That's not cheating the rules. It's following the rules. And people do change their mind.
Yeah.
Well, if we decide to go the route that you're talking about, or we could, you know, as of next March, when this becomes law and we do change the setbacks and somebody builds an accessory structure after that time, that they should know that they can't turn it into an ADU. You know what I mean? Because.
If they have the two categories.
In the setback, then it would be non-conforming, so it wouldn't comply with um.
No, but I see what David's saying, what he's worried about. You, you, say we do this, we have a difference between you know, we have a difference between new build and and conversion. Someone does a new build that is legal to be a new build, not, not as an accessory dwelling unit. And then the next year they come in and they, and they, after getting, you know, after building it, they come in, they say, actually, I want to change.
Yeah, it may not be cynical. I mean, the guy may suddenly have gotten a windfall of a hundred thousand dollars or something. Hey, now, look, I can do this. Or maybe three years later, or maybe um, the mother of the person is um, leaving um, a place. And so, well, you can do this. And this could all happen next year or the following year or so on. Or it's set up, you know, the intention.
Yeah.
About what the structure is, is not to have an ADU in it. You can't do that.
I agree. I agree completely. But I mean, I guess my point is, I don't really see that being an issue because currently someone can already take an existing structure, accessory structure um, at the edge of, let's say, the edge of their lot and turn it into an ADU. So I think we would be preserving that while putting up an obstacle towards people building ADUs at far-flung locations on their, on their house for the purposes of doing that. And yeah, perhaps it wouldn't apply to every single uh, like case, but I think it would provide enough of a, like a procedural hurdle that, that the most cynical people would, might be discouraged from planning out, building an accessory structure in the place where they want it, and then planning an, an, an adaptive reuse to an ADU later on. That, that's all I'm saying. I think that like, we do need to balance letting people read, like adapt structures that are already there. And also, I think Sandy does make an interesting point that has already also been brought up by Brian about just several different issues with setbacks and ADUs being built close to lot lines. There are issues with that potentially.
Is that legal? I'm just curious. I find Sandy's comment interesting, and I guess we'll have to circle back to the meeting, but what, I'm not saying anyone's towards this. Let's say we wanted to say the ADU needs to be within two hundred feet of the house, whatever. I'm making a number.
Yeah.
Would that even be legal based upon what the state's doing? I thought we couldn't be more restrictive than the state.
Well, if you set it up, you know, if you set it up, if there's a building envelope, that is a restricted building envelope, basically, for all um, buildings, accessory structures also within a certain perimeter.
I see what you're saying. Make it so, make it so accessories need to be within the building.
So we could do that. It's not that we, so we can't be more restrictive than the state, and then the state further, further says that we can't be more restrictive than a single-family home. So basically.
But the single-family home has to be within the building envelope.
Yes, yes, so.
Would be the way to do it.
Ergo, yeah.
But we don't have that right now.
No, but we could if people were concerned about what you're saying.
But I'll point out, building envelopes are not immutable characteristics of lots.
You could have it, you could have it too.
You, and, well.
My family is immutable, I think.
Well, but. Sorry, maybe that's not the right word. They're not an inherent part of a lot in Underhill. You buy a lot in Underhill, it doesn't necessarily come with a building envelope.
Right, pretty much.
Well, they're, they're, they're modern. They're made from, they derive from subdivisions. So like, you're only going to get a building envelope on your lot if that lot was recently created by subdivision and the DRB added, like, went, went, added the condition of a building envelope.
And it can still be expanded.
And it's still.
Literally, this is literally what I went through, because my wife went through a subdivision and I had to go through the whole process.
So I'm, I'm wary of using.
Single law lot, you know, there is no building envelope.
The DRB is discouraging building.
They are, and I'm wary of using them in accessory dwelling units because it's a narrow portion of lots in Underhill even have building envelopes. So I don't think that it's a good use, a good tool to to regulate ADUs.
I don't like them either. They have driveways that have to go around obstacles and so on.
Yeah, yeah. They're an awkward tool to begin with and they aren't universal. So I, I think we need to stick to the general regulations and the specific use standards or Articles Three and Four as much as possible when we're talking about how like uh, ADUs. Um, so we probably should wrap it up pretty soon.
Well, it is, basically, where we were originally.
Yeah.
Where you were, you know, allowing um, um, accessory um, dwellings within the um, this twenty, thirty, I mean, thirty, twenty, twenty foot area.
Yeah, so my proposal would be that we open next meeting, if everyone's good with it, let's open, maybe everyone think about it. We'll open next meeting, just go around the table and see where everyone's at on it. So the good news is I don't think you have any work to do. No worries. Um, and then I think we pick up there and then just not, I don't want to give you a common short trip. Maybe the other thing we think about is what Sandy spoke about and how people feel about trying to find some way, you know, you might hate it, but trying to find some, whether we want to tether the ADU if there's even a legal way to do it to the principal residence. So those are the two open topics, I think, yeah, so.
Very well. I'll get into the non-conform.
Yeah, the rest of your, yeah. Yeah.
Qualification.
All right. Can I get a?
Let's see, our next meeting is.
Uh, the eighteenth or something.
That'll be the eighteenth. I will not be here physically for that one, but I will be remoting it. Away, graduating from NYU.
Thursday after next, the eighteenth, I think it's, are you not available?
Hmm.
No, really, no planning commission needed. Um, does anyone want to make a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Thank you, Bart, second. No one? Everyone wants to say it? Sandy?
All right.